All right. Well, good evening, everybody. At this time, please silence your cell phone. I'm not getting feedback, am I? You silence your cell phone, be advised these proceedings are being recorded. For those physically present in the council chamber who desire to address the city council during the meeting, please complete the request to speak form available at the front entrance of the council chamber presented to the city clerk. Speakers physically present and participating via Zoom will be called upon at the appropriate time, and each person is allowed a three minutes of speaking time. Going to go ahead and call this meeting to order Tuesday, September 26, 2023 at 6:00 P. M. The location will be given by Mayor Pro Tem Wilson, and pledging allegiance will be given by our city attorney, Adrian. So, please stand.
Please place your right hands over your hearts and begin after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. So, do we have any A B 2449 disclosures?
No, Mayor.
Okay. A recording, additional or removing items from the agenda, do we have any?
No additions or deletions.
Pardon me, Mayor, we need to do roll call.
I'm sorry. Yes, roll call, please.
Councilmember Rodriguez Robles.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Wilson.
I am here.
Mayor Hussey.
Present.
Councilmembers Allen and Henderson are absent. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thanks for reminding me about the roll call. Okay, no reordering or things. So, item B, special presentation, San Bernardino County, San Bernardino Community College District Chandler Diane Rodriguez is...
She's en route.
En route, so we'll bring that back.
Can we move it?
Yes, we'll move that one. So, item C, consent calendar. The following consent calendar items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They will be acted upon the city council. Any time without discussion, any council member, staff member, or citizen may request removal of the items of the consent calendar for discussions. So, do I have any removal of any items? Now, is there any public comment on the consent calendar?
No, Mayor.
All right, no removals. Have a motion?
So moved.
I'll second. We go and have a vote, please.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Public comment. This is opportunity for members of the public to comment on any items not appearing on regular agenda because it restricts content of California law. The city council may not discuss or act on any items on the agenda, but may briefly respond to statements made or ask questions for clarification. The mayor may also request a brief response from the staff to request raised during public comment or request the matter be agendized for future meetings.
Bobby Forbes.
Bobby Forbes.
Thank you. Good evening. Excuse me, I came in late. I apologize for that. I tried to get here on time. So, over the weekend, we had some issues in town regarding J.C. Wallace. One, that someone walked away from the facility, was reported by the sheriff that that person was missing. The community figured out that it was where it was from. I don't know if the gentleman was found or not. Then, there was a panhandler at the corner of Canal and Barton on the south side where the driveway is for J.C. Wallace, and he had a big sign that said, "I need money." So, when I went to call the city, I was disconnected to notify them that we had a panhandler in town, and I turned around and came back, and the man had folded up his sign and proceeded to go down the driveway to J.C. Wallace and check himself in, let him in through the gate. And so, I called the facility, and the man pretty much just disregarded my comment or my call as probably a nuisance call from the neighborhood. I let him know that I would speak about it at council. So, that's two incidences this weekend that are just not acceptable, and the council okayed this business to come in. I know it was on last September's council that okayed it. They changed the city, or the staff changed it. Somebody must have approved it. I'm upset, the community's upset, somebody needs to check into this further. Conrad, our city manager Conrad, did respond to my email and said that he would look into it, but if I don't bring it up here, I don't feel like anybody else has heard. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Forbes. We are looking into the issues and these accusations and what's going on. So, the city is aware of it, the sheriff's aware of it, so we are looking into it. It's not going on deaf ears. Okay, so you want to do a special presentation now?
Yes, Chancellor Rodriguez is here.
All right, Chancellor, it's going to come to the...
Well, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
So, as introduced, my name is Diana Rodriguez. I'm the chancellor of the San Bernardino Community College District, and our district houses both Crafton Hills College and San Bernardino Valley College. So, how many of you here have been a student or an alum of one of our institutions? All right. Glad, glad to see, glad to see. You know, and it's, it's always nice to see our alums and foreigner students in such prestigious positions, so thank you for your work here. We appreciate it. You know, and when we talk about impact, I'm happy to share with you a few updates on behalf of our district. But before I do that, I would like to share with you a video that kind of highlights who we are. So, if I can point your attention to the screen. I just love this video. You know, it really highlights who we are and tells kind of the story behind our almost 100 years of existence here in our community. And I also want to share with you some of the local impact that we've had on our community, our economic impact, which supports all of our educational operations. And the bond alone that we have, we have contributed $163 million to small and large businesses in our communities, offering contract and work to our local folks here within the ill and empire, within our communities, and we're just excited about that. It is a priority of not only the administration, but of our board of trustees, that we give careful consideration to those that live and work right here in our communities. And in speaking of our board, it's important to show the faces of our district, the visionaries of our district, if you will, including our board of trustees. Not all of them are here today, but I think it's important that we recognize each one of them and value the work that they do. The chair of our board is Dr. Stephanie Houston. Our vice chair is Dr. Anne Varisell. The clerk of our board is Mr. Joseph Williams. Our other trustees include Dr. Nathan Gonzalez, Mr. John Longville, Gloria Macias Harrison, and also Mr. Frank Reyes, the trustee who is specific to this area in Grand Terrace, who's joining us today, and just want to publicly say thank you, Frank, for all of your leadership and the work that you did to help us move this bond forward and for all of our initiatives that we have at the institution. Also, probably two very important folks on our board, our student trustees, Michelle Lai and Diamond Ruiz Martinez, and also our presidents of our institution, Dr. Kevin Haran, representing Crafton Hills College, and Dr. Linda Fontella at San Bernardino Valley College. So, so who do we serve in our community? We have approximately 23,000 students across our districts, ranging from about 15 years of age, if through some of our middle college programs, through as, as I'm going to say, seasoned folks into their eighties in our program, but 23,000 students across our campuses serving 22 cities and communities. We have seven K-12 partners, districts that we serve, and they're, they're listed there of all those. And we also reach over 4 million students through KBCR and our radio stations. We like to think that all 4 million plus of those individuals are in some way our students because they will learn things from KBCR. So, we're very, we're very proud of our KBCR team and what they've been able to do for our communities. And to also show more of a value of higher education value and training that we offer at our institutions, we are committed to keeping the cost of our tuition extremely low so that our communities can afford to go to school. And if you take a look at the chart there, I won't go over all of the numbers for you, but the cost of to go to community college to earn your degree is just under $1,300, whereas we take a look at a UC, which is almost $14,000, not to mention that many of our not-for-profit four-year schools can range upwards of $45,000 a year. So, I hope that you can see from just this chart alone what a value going to a community college, specifically San Bernardino Valley College or Crafton Hills College, can be for our students and their families. And to further support our students by removing barriers for them to come to our institutions, we started a program called Books Plus, and we know that the way that we funded our Books Plus program, which offers free textbook rentals for all of our students, regardless of your age, regardless of ethnicity, regardless if you're taking one unit or 20 units, your books and materials, we are going to provide them for you for free, right, for the remainder of this academic year, our fall and spring terms. And we're able to fund this through state funding, our program. We are hopeful that we are going to be able to continue this. We have been able to do it for the past three years, so we're hopeful that we will be able to continue to do that. But we want folks to be able to take advantage of this program while we have it. Free textbooks, when we know that textbooks can run a student anywhere from $250 to about $600, $700 per term. So, this is a huge advantage for our students. Also, to help our students, we have started what we call a college core program, which is again another program that is funded, funded through the state, which allows our students to volunteer at local nonprofits. It's a way of teaching our students how to give back to their communities, and in return, we give them a weekly paycheck for their volunteer time. And at the end of the year, and their server, their service totals up to the recommended number of hours, they would receive $10,000 by the end of their term. And this is an amazing program because it gives the students an opportunity to build resumes, to understand the importance of giving back to their community, and receive monies that they can put towards their education or towards other areas, toward their basic needs, to help out their households, to pay for childcare, whatever their purpose is. So, we're very proud of this program. So, if you run across nonprofits that can use some help from some of our stellar students, I'm a little biased, I'm going to call them stellar students, please send them, send them our way. We would love to connect the students with your organizations. We're also growing to offer more local and training. So, this next video that I want to share with you highlights two amazing buildings, two amazing projects that I am so proud of, of our campuses, for putting these training and providing opportunities for our students at the forefront of their missions. So, if we can show this video. So, these projects were funded through Measure CC, a half a billion dollar construction program, and we're, we're also happy to report that to date, our bond program has paid direct wages to local construction workers totaling over $1.4 million, again, keeping the dollars here in our communities. And lastly, I'd like to share with you the work of KBCR, the home of PBS and NPR. The KBCR radio and television station is housed here on to the Valley College site, which again serves 4 million plus through its reach out, and also the home of the First Nations Experience, FNX, which is the only, and I'll say it again, the only Native American and world indigenous television channel in the United States, and we're very proud to be hosting that program. And I welcome you all to join us at the station for a tour at any time, or to come on, or to come on the radio or television to talk about things that are important to Grand Terrace, because it certainly is important to us, and you're welcome to join us at, at any time. Again, just want to, I think I'm probably about out of time, so I want to thank you for allowing myself and my team to come in and share a bit about what we're doing at our district office. And again, we welcome you to come for a tour of not only our station, but any of our campuses, and more importantly, thank you. Thank you for the leadership that you provide for Grand Terrace. Thank you.
Thank you, Chancellor. Counsel, have anything to say? Mayor Pro Tem?
You know, I'm just old enough. I just turned 70 a few days ago, so I'm old enough to actually to have been involved in San Bernardino Valley College's premier program at the time about IT. And I got an opportunity to learn a little bit about IT, and it got me interested enough that it helped me in my work circumstance, and it was responsible for promotions. And, you know, as we move into the work world from a formal education opportunity, some of us find that we have degrees and different educational opportunities that aren't an automatic step. And so, it made it possible through the Valley College, college programs for me to kind of customize what I had learned. I used to sit in board meetings with the owner of the company, and it would be like he was talking a different language. And so, I decided on my own to just go ahead and find out more about what he was talking about, and I did that through UC Irvine. I also did it through Mount Sac, I did it through UCR, and I did it through San Bernardino Valley College. And I think it's a, it's a great system. I also had an opportunity to teach in a private circumstance, in concert with the county of San Bernardino funding, and was able to augment some of the education that my, the, the students had received during formal education years or had missed, in most cases missed. It's really amazing to me to, to be dealing with somebody that's 25 years old that can't make change. And, you know, we, we did a lot of work in relation to financial situations as well as just regular arithmetic, and I got a limited teaching credential out of that, which made me in partnership with the J.C., and it made it possible for me to be able to teach even though I hadn't gone through a full-on program. And so, anyway, I'm a big fan, so I greatly appreciate it. You thank us, we thank you.
Well, my husband and I like to joke that we took the 10-year, two-year program. But, you know, it took some maturity. A good thing is I started with Frank, and then Frank worked there, and fortunately, decades before he retired, I finished and moved on to other course, course works and graduations. But, so really, good organization, a lot of fond memories for a lot of people. Thank you for your work.
Well, thank you, Chancellor, and, you know, thank you, Frank, for your work, and also, this guy doesn't like to be put out in the public, but Yohan Gallo, who's sitting right there behind you, he helped, you know, with your automotive industry thing, so. And we talked a lot of time, my, my oldest son, he went to CBU and APU, and, and then he ended up becoming a police officer in Riverside. I told him, you know, he could have went to Cal State San Bernardino too, you know, it saved your dad some money, but, you know, and so, and I, and my youngest son went to Cal State San Bernardino for a year, and then he went to UTI. But, you know, community college, I went to Palomar College when I was in the Marine Corps. The units were $5 a unit, but the books, I'm glad to see that you had that book thing because the books were expensive. I mean, $35 back in the eighties is crazy. You try to buy used books, but, you know, I'm glad to see that, that's a blessing, that program, you know, for one, for a parent who helped their kids get through school, and two, if a child or a student is by himself trying to, you know, make ends meet, or even working people trying to, you know, do a working parents and stuff. So, I hope that continues on with those free book rentals. That's a big plus, and thank you for everything you did. Beautiful campuses we have here. I'm glad to see, you know, I'm not a tax guy, but I'm glad to see those bond measures being used because I'm always impressed when I go on the campus. I mean, it's, it's a beautiful campus, it's, it's just great, and you get the sense of pride there when you go there to the campus is a plus, and that's what, you know, I always said when I was on the oversight committee for Colton, and it's like, hey, we got to take care of the high schools because that's when people are leaving. And even when we built our new high school, we got to make sure Bloomington and Colton High has the same, you know, buildings and academics, and they did, and that's the thing, it's a sense of pride. And, you know, thank you for, you know, coming here today and showing us, you know, the great work that's being done, and, and, you know, I'm glad the technology thing's there, you know, that all this is going there, because a lot of people think, hey, I'm just going to, you know, get this degree, but people don't realize, you know, I still have to have people roll up their sleeves to work on this stuff. And I know Omnibus has a program there too, and they're looking for people. I mean, it's not a job, it's a career. It's a career that's going to give somebody a chance in life, and it's kind of hard to come by nowadays, you know, getting these full-time career jobs. But thank you, Charles, thank you, Frank, and thank you, Yohan, too, you know, I know I'm embarrassing you, but, you know, thank you for coming out tonight and showing us everything, and, and thanks for these heavy coasters, you know, I'm going to use this as a gavel next time, but it's 24 karat gold, is that what it is? Yeah? Well, thank you, guys, and have a blessed night. Thank you.
So, moving on along, public comment, we didn't close it, right? So, do we have anybody else there for public comment? It's still open, right? I thought we didn't close. I didn't close, but we were right in the middle of Bobby Forbes, and then we had a...
We only had, we only had Bobby Forbes, and then we went into the present vision.
Okay, so public comment is closed?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, public hearing, public hearing adoption resolution relating to rate increase for solid waste collection services authorized estimate. Rate increase for solid waste services in the five-year prior commencing October 1st, 2023 throughout July 1st, 2027, not to exceed more than 10% in previous years. So, the chair stated that public hearing item announced if any ex parte communication conflict of interest, do we have any conflict of interest on this between the council? Nobody owns shares in Burt Tech? All right, staff presentation, recommendation for public hearing.
Thank you, Mayor Hussey, Mayor Pro Tem, City Council, Shanita Tillman, Senior Management Analyst with Public Works. The staff report before you supports the following goal, ensure our fiscal viability by ensuring appropriate cost recovery for services. The city of Grand Terrace contracts with Burt Tech to provide refuse hauling services. The last rate adjustment was approved July 12, 2022, and became effective August 1st. Rate increases were for residential, multifamily, and commercial customers. To meet Prop 218 requirements for this hearing, a notice was sent to all Burt Tech customers on August 11, 2023. Tonight's presentation will cover residential refuse rates for 64-gallon and 96-gallon containers, commercial refuse rates, how our rates compare to surrounding cities, and introduce an automatic increase of fees for a five-year period. The proposed residential rates are as follows. For a standard 96-gallon bin, the current rate is $33.25. The proposed rate is $34.05, which is an 80 cents difference. And for the 64-gallon bin, the proposed rate is $32.57, a 93 cent difference, which is both costs are less than a Snickers bar.
Do you have one?
I don't, but it's even cheaper at $1.25, the Dollar Tree, $1.25 store. So, for commercial proposed rates, the 96-gallon bin is proposed at $44.76, cost difference of 86 cents, and the three-yard bin will have, the current rate is $206.95. The proposed rate is reduction to $182.52, which is a cost difference of $24.43. The, due to last year's rates having an increase in disposal costs with cities adopting new race, waste disposal agreements, there is actually a credit that is being given to those that are selecting the three-yard bin. those that are selecting the three-yard bin. Before you is a comparison of our city and surrounding cities and their current rates. As you can see in green, the City of Grand Terrace at thirty-four dollars and five cents is, you know, treading in the middle. The lowest city, their rate for, is Fort Chino Hills, and that is twenty-seven dollars and fifty-six cents, and the highest being the City of Upland, and that's thirty-six dollars and fifty-eight cents. Okay, to discuss California Government Code 53756, that code states, "A government agency that provides water, sewage, or trash collection, collection services can create a plan to change fees as they, excuse me, can create a plan to change the fees they charge. This plan can automatically increase the fees based on certain factors, such as the cost of receiving water, the cost of cleaning, the cost of cleaning sewage increases, or if price increases due to inflation." What an agency must follow to implement this plan is the rate adjustment plan must be connected to a property and can only last up to five years. The plan can include a way to change the fees due to inflation or pass-through costs, but the fees can't go higher than the actual cost to perform the service. Lastly, if they're going to change the fees, they have to inform the residents at least thirty days before the new fees start. The baseline for the rates would be the most current approved rate. The maximum annual rate increase limit is not to exceed ten percent of the previous year's rate. Some factors that contribute to the cost components are labor, equipment, materials and supplies, dump disposal fees, state program compliance, and third-party increases or other related pass-through costs. As part of this plan, staff will prepare and send annual notices to residents at least thirty days before the new rates become effective. Ensure that there's transparency in how the rate adjustments are determined, which is based on ninety percent of CPI and related pass-through costs previously mentioned. Maintain open channels of communication for residents to seek clarification or voice concerns. The Public Works Department number is listed on the screen. And as part of this plan, we will regularly assess the quality and efficiency of refuse collection services. At the end of the five years, we will review the rate increase strategy and adjust as necessary. As of the start of this hearing, there have been five returned protests given to the city clerk. If approved, rates would go into effect October 1st, 2023. Staff recommends the following to council: Open the public hearing as required by Proposition 218. Take public testimony and accept any additional written protest. Close the public hearing, and the mayor shall ask the city clerk to provide a count of all written protests received. And finally, provided there is no majority protest, fifty percent plus one of all parcels against the proposed rate adjustment. Consider all evidence and testimony presented. Adopt a resolution adopting solid waste rates to be effective October 1st, 2023, and subject to a five-year adjustment not to exceed an amount of more than ten percent of the previous year's rate pursuant to Government Code Section 53756. Thank you for your time, and if you have any questions, I'm available. And we also have Mike Aragon from Burt Tech with us.
Does counsel have any questions? So I'm gonna go and open public hearing applicant, presentation, a public hearing item. Mike, would you like to get up and speak on this behalf? Okay. Does counsel have any questions for Burt Tech? Okay, public testimony in favor and against the, the public hearing, do we have any?
Just the five written protests that we have. We have no public comment at this time.
And they were regards to the rate increase?
The five protests were opposing the rate increase.
Okay. So application rebuttal, so, um, and close public hearing on this. Do we have any, anything else that we need to, on this, Deborah?
No, just closing the public, a motion.
Okay. So do I have a motion for the rate increase for Burt Tech for the period of, for this public hearing?
Mr. Mayor, before we get a motion-
Oh, I'm sorry.
No problem. I just want to confirm for the record that five protests does not constitute fifty plus one of all parcels in the city, just for the record.
That is correct.
Thank you.
See, and that's why we have you up here.
You know, I, I was wondering why you have me up here.
I did it on purpose to make you earn your dollar today, so. Thank you, Adrian. So, yeah, the five, it doesn't, and, you know, and by all means, you know, you have every right to write to city clerk or come and speak on anything that you don't agree with. And I understand that, you know, eighty cents might be, you know, significant for some people, but, you know, with the cost of rising everything and the fuel costs and stuff, it, it's, it's sad way to do it. I mean, even like with groceries, but everything has that domino effect. And, you know, Burt Tech's been more than fair to this residents in the city. Once again, when times were hard, they didn't raise their rates, and they were actually taking it for the residents here. So, you know, and, and being on the council, it's kind, you know, we don't have any, we're not making money off this, and it's just part of the thing that we have to do as far as keeping our cities clean. And, and then also, you know, Burt Tech does the free, two free pickups, and, and we, we establish stuff to make sure our city does stay clean, and they still pick up trash no matter what. So, anything else? Do we have to read the resolution or anything?
Nope.
Just a motion?
Yeah, motion to adopt the proposed resolution as stated in this, in the agenda package.
Do we have a motion?
Motion to adopt as presented.
My second.
So a motion, a second, please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
All right, thank you. So item F, unfinished business, none. Item G, new business, none. Age, future request, none. So, thank you, Chancellor, for coming out tonight. Thank you. And communications, city communications, so Mr. Henderson's not here, Mr. Allen's not here. I think they had too much fun at the League of Cities, that what happened, Conrad. You're supposed to keep an eye on them.
Well, we, we got them home.
Oh, they got them home? After that, you were done?
That's it.
Councilmember Sylia Robles, do you have anything?
I have nothing to report this meeting, but I would like to let everyone know and express condolences. Board member of the San Bernardino Valley College, trustee Gloria Mercedes-Harrison, lost her husband this weekend. They own the Colton Courier, the Rialto Record, and the El Chicano newspaper. Known her since I was nineteen, and Bill, and, you know, when you lose your partner, I'm sure, like, all of us have our longtime partners. I know that's an incredible loss for her. So, and also, we could endure it in his memory, I appreciate it.
What was his name again?
William Harrison. Harrison.
Harrison. Mayor Protem?
I have nothing at this time, Mayor.
Okay, well, I just was came back from South Carolina to see my new grandson, and I appreciate the prayers for the little guy. He's two and a half weeks old, and, and he got viral meningitis, so it was, he's still fighting it, there's nothing you could do on viral meningitis, but, you know, just, I'm just glad we were there. And I, I did get emails and calls when I'm away in South Carolina. I mean, I guess it's a twenty-four-hour, three-hundred-and-sixty-five-day job, and even when you're on vacation. But most of them were for the ordinances and the, the code enforcement that's been going out. And just to let everybody know, those codes and ordinances were written in 2004 by the council, it's almost twenty years ago. And we have been getting complaints about, you know, yards waste and what they're looking at. It's just, you know, a little pride in your thing. And just to let you know, even the mayor is not immune, so I did get a violation that I'm three feet over, so I am taking care of it, so. And I don't expect any special treatment either, so I will be working on that, so that's our, my wife's anniversary gift is to remove our planner, so she's not too happy. But, you know, when I heard Ms. Forbes up there saying, hey, RV parking's a plus for selling your house, so when I sell my house, whatever, I guess I'll say I have RV parking. I had a little RV parking, now I can put a big RV parking. But that's just the way it is. It is what it is. Those rules were there for a reason. I take full responsibility. I guess I don't know how to measure right, I forgot about the towing hitch part, but, you know, we, we do what we gotta do. So, yeah, even the council, you know, if we got pulled over by the sheriffs, we don't expect special treatment, you know, no free ride homes or anything. We're all residents here, and we, you know, have integrity, and that's what we gotta do. But that's, you know, but once again, thank you for everybody who had prayers for my grandson, really appreciate it. And so, go ahead and close our public comment, our comments, so city manager communication.
Yeah, real, real briefly, I'd like to add with the code enforcement thing, and thank the residents, because I know it's hard when code enforcement comes and puts a notice on your door, and the first thing you want to do is, is be angry or feel like you're being picked on. And we've had a remarkable response from the residents of being cooperative, wanting to work with us, and actually resolve the issues. So it, it's been a pleasure, and that, maybe not for you, but it has been for us, and, and the way, the way you're responding as a community, I really appreciate it. Also, just for information, the country fair is starting Saturday at nine o'clock in the Professional Plaza. Please come out and enjoy, enjoy the time. Thank you.
All right, great. So do the staff have any other communications? Lieutenant Lane, would you like to say anything? Are you good?
It's a loaded question. No. I don't have anything this evening.
All right, well, you know, everybody, thank you for coming out tonight. Thank you for being part of our meeting. And, you know, just like to thank, you know, yeah, San Bernardino Community College, it's a great place, it's a good place to learn, great resources, I'm glad they came out. I should've asked if they had volunteers that do block work for my, for my yard, but anyway, so any, the next regular city council meeting will be held Tuesday, October 10th, 2023, at 6:00 PM. Any request to have an item placed on future agenda must be made in writing and submitted to the city clerk's office, and the requests will be processed in accordance with the city procedures. And we're gonna close in memory of William Harrison and his council meeting, and, you know, just prayers be with his wife and the family, and during his time in need, and, you know, it's hard when you lose a loved one, and just, you know, just God give her comfort. God bless and have a good night.